If I can have everybody's attention, I'd like to welcome you to the March 20th Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. If we could all rise, Dr. Evans is going to do the invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Join me as we pray. Heavenly Father, we come today thanking you for this first day of spring, and as we've endured a cold winter, we're reminded today of the beauty of the spring and the beauty of the future. And you give us hope in life through education. You give us hope in life through the opportunity to serve one another, and you give us hope in life by the good things that we're able to experience and the joys that you give us. Father, we celebrate today because we celebrate the accomplishment of so many students in Forsyth County schools. We celebrate the teaching, the leadership that has been done by teachers and leaders that have made a difference in the lives of young people, and we thank you and we thank them for their service. We thank you for our Board of Education who gathers tonight to conduct the business of this school system. For over 40,000 students, we pray for their safety. For our teachers, we pray that you would guide each of us as we have an opportunity to influence our students, and we pray for our community. We are so thankful for those who serve each day by making a difference in the lives of students, making a difference in the lives of each of the departments, and for those who have served in the past. And Father, tonight, we say a special prayer for one of our former colleagues, Walt Fairchild, as he struggles with the realities of the mortality of life, and we pray for your grace and your blessings upon his life and help us to know how to minister to people like Walt as they struggle in this time of special need. We thank you again for your love and for your grace. We ask your presence to be with us to give us the wisdom that we don't have of ourselves, and we thank you and pray this sincerely in thy name. Amen. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
A motion by Tom and a second by Ann. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, next we have recognitions with Dr. Cindy Salom.
Got it on? Good evening. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce all of our awards and our recognitions, and it is just awesome to see you all here. As I call these out, those of you who are here to support them, we would like for you to stand because we know that as I call them out and we recognize all their great accomplishments, that in fact, without you, they wouldn't be here. We will start with the Class 6A Girl Swimming Champions at Lambert High School. Carrie Langley is their head coach. And tonight to represent the team is Hannah Choir, who is captain, Blair Berto, who is captain, Jake Williams is also captain, Grace Patti, Eduardo Agula. Agula, I told him three times I would work on that.
Congratulations.
Back-to-back state champions, their principal says. If you're here to support the team, would you please stand? Stand, principal. Thank you all. Next, from North Forsyth High School is the Academic Team State Champions. Amy Dykes is their coach. The JV coach, which I'll talk about in just a minute, is Mr. Fahey, just stay where you are. Ashley Amukamara, Brittany Bozillo, Brianna Brinkman, Emma Browning, Justin Ebert, Ryan Yates, Erin Strickland. I didn't get everybody. Who did I miss? Conrad Patrick. They didn't put your name on the list, Conrad. Congratulations for those of you. Their second, okay, their second championship as well. And I'd like to now, Mr. Fahey, if you will come this way and let us congratulate you. He is the JV coach. He left Central years ago, 20 years ago, to go to North Forsyth, and he's been academic coach there. He's had 33 years of teaching Forsyth County, and he has decided he's going to retire. So let's give him a round of applause. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. It's been a great pleasure to work. Thanks for all you've done.
I know there are those of you who need to support that group. Are you here to support? I think I've got principals and assistant principals. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Next is our Ask a Model Program designation, and it is quite an honor, and it is the North Forsyth High School Counseling Department. Kathy Wiggly is head counselor. Jordan LaFever is a member of the counseling team, as is Kim Haynes, Josh Owens, and Leanne Strickland. Please give them a round of applause. If you're here to support them, if you would stand and let us recognize you too. In addition, they also told me that Josh Owens, because of their selection, has been asked to present at the national conference, and he's also been asked to be a ramp application reviewer. That's quite an honor. Congratulations, Josh. Next is our Reach Employee of the Month. This is always a great time because each month we honor an employee in a different category. Ms. Darlene Foster, who is nurse at Cole Mountain Elementary. Please let's congratulate her, and if you, go ahead. There you go. Stand right here. Okay, now listen to what they had to say about you. Darlene has been a wonderful inspiration and mentor. She laughs and cares compassionately for those little ones. Darlene Foster is a patient, intelligent, and calming nurse at Cole Mountain Elementary School. She is very conscientious, organized, and a fun-loving nurse. She goes above and beyond to make sure the students at Cole Mountain are healthy and ready to learn. Darlene is an excellent example of what constitutes a Reach employee. Greatest of all, Darlene is positive and finds a way to laugh through the worst. She makes my tough days not so tough and gives her heart to her kids. If you are here in support of Darlene, if you would stand, let us recognize you. And at the end of our line, thank you to Jim and Nick for always having an award for our employees. Next is the Superior Performance Spotlight. And then when we finish that, Dr. Evans is going to recognize the School Board Appreciation Week. We have Lambert High School HOSA group here, and Doris Dickerson is their sponsor. And just recently in Athens, just a couple of weeks ago, Doris was awarded the Georgia HOSA Advisor of the Year. Our HOSA, for those of you who don't know, is the Health Occupation Student Association. So to be the Advisor of the Year is a wonderful thing. So Doris, will you stand? All right.
And I also have my colleague, Krista Low, who's also learning a lot at Lambert.
Thank you, Krista. Krista Low is also a school. All right. Ms. Dickerson, do I hand it over to your students?
Sure.
Wow, that's impressive.
As a rising ninth grader, I had a choice between the healthcare pathway or a different pathway. I tentatively chose the healthcare pathway because of my interest in the medical field, and now I can say that I'm very happy with my choice and wouldn't have it any other way. My first year as a healthcare student at Lambert has been full of building my foundation of my knowledge about the healthcare field. Intro to healthcare has really deepened my understanding about the healthcare field. For example, now I'm no longer intimidated by medical terms such as myoraphy. Now, thanks to intro to healthcare, I can pick apart any medical term and then define the meaning. So myoraphy has two parts, myo, meaning muscle, and raphy, meaning suturing. Therefore, myoraphy denotes the suturing of a muscle. Easy.
For you.
Another piece of information that I have gained from the healthcare pathway has been information on medical jobs. Before this class, I really only knew of three jobs in the medical field: doctor, nurse, and dentist. But now, thanks to the healthcare pathway at Lambert, I can tell anyone about multiple medical professions, including but not limited to anesthesiology, medical assisting, and even biotechnology. Knowing that there are so many options in the healthcare career for me, well, that just makes me realize that somewhere out there is the right job for me. After healthcare at Lambert, I went from having no clue about healthcare to being in the know. Being in the healthcare program at Lambert has also given me experiences that other freshmen just don't get. As of today, I am fully CPR certified, thanks to Lambert Healthcare Pathway. Now, I'm excited about the new opportunities I will experience as I continue on the pathway, such as interning at Northside Hospital and being a fully certified phlebotomist. Those are accomplishments that I just can't get without the healthcare pathway, which is why I'm so grateful for it. In short, at the beginning of ninth grade, I was stuck between two different pathways. But now, the future is clear. Intro to healthcare has really nurtured my interest in the healthcare field and helped it blossom from a budding dream to a clear reality. Whenever I'm asked by any eighth grader about what classes to take, my answer is always the same: Intro to healthcare because it isn't just a class. It's the first step on the pathway to your future. Thank you.
Wow.
Very good speaker.
Healthcare is a path in which we devote our lives to help others. Stemming from our high school careers, we immerse ourselves in a healthcare curriculum that stands unequaled in our community. My education currently focuses on delving into laboratory skills and microbiology, formerly deemed basic diagnostics. We establish and expound upon skills such as microorganism identification and gram staining, even going as far as to grow common disease-causing pathogens and diagnosing the possible illnesses they could cause. In short, my education provides key invaluable knowledge that will apply directly to my future in healthcare. Thank you.
Healthcare has also affected my high school career as well. As of this year, I'm in Clinical Laboratory Technology, which is a third class in the healthcare pathway. In this course, students can learn about the six divisions of the clinical lab, which include hematology, chemistry, blood bank, microbiology, histology, and phlebotomy. One of the key highlights of this class is the business partnership that we have with Northside Hospital. The students have the opportunity to go to Northside and rotate through these six departments shadowing clinical lab scientists who are specialists. Students learn about what is actually performed inside of the clinical lab of a hospital and the basic duties and testing done there every day. Another highlight is that at the end of the course, students can be nationally provisionally certified as a phlebotomist tech. To prepare for this, students learn a lot about venipuncture procedures and all the materials surrounding that topic. Students are able to practice on trainer arms, as you saw in the video, and learn the steps that the phlebotomist follows in order to draw blood from the patient. Thank you.
I'm Chris Waits. I've just taken part in a lot of Career Tech Pathway classes in my recent history in Lambert, and I just wanted to talk about how it's affected me specifically. I've got a lot of opportunities that my parents have never gotten to take part of that they're very impressed with, like going to MIT for IGEM, which is a genetic engineering club. And basically, it's just taught me real-world applications that general education classes can't always teach, like learning a solution in chemistry or culturing a plate in biology is really helpful to know. But something I've learned in my high school career is that even though you know something, just because you do it in real life, it will never turn out correctly the first time. So Career Tech Pathway classes make sure that when you actually go into a job situation like that, well, hopefully I'll be taking an internship next year, that you're prepared for actually doing what you've learned and preparing you for a real-world application. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Lamb, and as a senior in high school, I'm constantly getting asked what I want to be when I grow up. And many people my age have no idea what they want to be when they grow up, and even a small fraction of those who do change their mind throughout college. So I've been very blessed to gain a sense of direction through my internship with Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. My internship has allowed me to gain knowledge that far surpasses my years, and I have been able to witness patient care in a way that is typically reserved for students in their final years of schooling. I think that the internship has personally impacted my life in ways that I can't even describe. My internship has allowed me to open my heart to a field that I never even knew existed. I was in the rehab outpatient department of the hospital when I witnessed an occupational therapist teaching a young boy skills to become a kid again. The young boy had a mental disorder, and such skills that she was teaching him were second nature to kids of his age. However, he felt like it was the biggest thing in the world when he got to learn to color and he got to learn to tie his shoe. So when I saw how positively he reacted to those skills, something inside me clicked, and I realized that's what I wanted to do for the rest of my life. Without my internship, I would have no direction, and I'm so grateful for it for introducing me to the field of occupational therapy.
Hi, my name's Andrew Standevan, and I'm a Lambert intern. After completing the Healthcare Career Tech Pathway, 20 chosen interns were given the option to choose a specific field that they would like to observe. My love for chemistry and my background in biology and human anatomy and physiology compelled me to choose pharmacy. After submitting my request to my teacher, Ms. Dickerson, she used her time in the summer to go out and try to find internship sites for all 20 of us. At the end of it all, I was very fortunate to have her connect me to the different areas in pharmacy at Northside Forsyth Hospital. As of today, I've been an intern at the hospital for 74 hours, and all I can say at this point is just thank you to all of those who made this possible because it's been a tremendous experience. It truly has opened my eyes to various possibilities in pharmacy and has impacted my interest in possible career tech pathways for the better. After talking with many of the pharmacy technicians and pharmacists in both the clinical and retail setting, I feel as though pharmaceutical research is my calling. All of the employees I have been in contact with at Northside Forsyth Hospital have done an excellent job in answering all my questions and tending to any specific interests I may have had other than pharmacy. For example, just last week, I watched Dr. Akata perform a fenestrated endovascular aortic aneurysm repair. Anyway, he's a nationally recognized cardiovascular surgeon, and this surgery takes six to eight hours to do, and he is one of the only surgeons allowed to do this by the FDA. And I think it's safe to say that I'm one of the very few privileged high school students who have seen this procedure, thanks to this internship. From learning the difference between multitude of anticoagulants to learning how to label and scan IV medications for all the patients that use them, I feel confident in saying that this opportunity has taught me enough to hit the ground running if I were to continue to pursue a career in pharmacy. I know my internship has broadened my ideas for the future educational courses I may be taking, and if not all of 19 other interns may feel the same way.
Hi, everyone. My name is Preeraatha Krishnan. I'm a junior at Lambert High School, and I am Lambert Hostess President. As high school students in the healthcare pathway, we seek for opportunities that not only allow us to broaden our knowledge in the medical field, but also allow us to make a difference in the surrounding healthcare community that aid us in becoming the successful future health professionals we aim to be. We are honored to be able to have these life-changing experiences through HOSA, a nationally-recognized healthcare organization. As an active member since my freshman year, I can say that HOSA is a very esteemed organization that always gives back to the community. Two key factors of HOSA are the numerous opportunities of community outreach that are available, as well as the beneficial business and healthcare partnerships that are built through them. The ultimate aim of all of these partnerships is to benefit our dedicated and passionate members. For example, one specific partnership necessary to mention is with Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. For the past two years, we have hosted the Chowa Football Game, where a huge portion of our membership is involved with collecting numerous donations and volunteering throughout the night. After meeting with Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, we were able to initiate a partnership that not only resulted in numerous internship opportunities for the upperclassmen in our healthcare pathway, but also various community service opportunities as well. Another exciting and generous partnership we have is with Northside Hospital Forsyth. Through which students in the pathway are given professional shadowing experiences as well as other volunteer opportunities. Our members are given the chance to advocate for cancer awareness through the Northside Hospital Celebration of Lights each year. Lambert HOSA is also blessed to have the opportunity to partner with the American Red Cross and Northside Hospital for our annual blood drives. This is one of the wonderful ways we love to give back to our community, and it provides an opportunity for Lambert HOSA members to assist in carrying out these blood drives. It's one of the most anticipated volunteer opportunities for our members, and it's absolutely amazing to see the members excited when the blood drives come around. Along with community service, HOSA is also known for the eye-opening conferences and competitive events provided to the members. Georgia HOSA recently hosted the largest state leadership conference in the entire world, and Lambert HOSA was present with the largest delegation. Seventy of our members placed top 10 at state, and 30 of our members won medals for placing top three in their competitive events. We are truly honored to have one of our own advisors, Mrs. Krista Low, elected as the chair-elect of the Board of Directors for Georgia HOSA, and I am much honored to have been recently elected to serve as Georgia HOSA's president-elect. We are also very proud to have Mrs. Doris Dickerson titled as the 2014 Georgia HOSA Advisor of the Year. Lambert HOSA was recognized as a truly outstanding HOSA chapter at this recent conference, and we hope to go above and beyond in our future years as well. Overall, Lambert HOSA is a very active organization, and it's a very key part in our healthcare curriculum at Lambert High School. So thank you very much.
I'm just totally blown away. I'm not, I just, to be able to do this, and I'm like the parents, the ones, one of you that talked about, never had those opportunities, but to see what the career pathways that we're heading to, what Valerie has done so much with, is just very rewarding to know that you've got that opportunity to understand. And all of you speak so well, and it's just impressive. If I didn't know that you were in high school, I would really think you were college students. Even older, you're very, very poised and very, very impressive in knowing that what you do. And for the advisors, thank you for what you do because I know you go over and beyond the time to make sure that these kids get the opportunities that you have. Thank you to you, both of you.
That was really interesting. I have a son that's an EMT, and so he's, I mean, he's in EMT school right now, and he's been telling me some things like that, and he would have loved to have been here because I think that y'all are, some of you have even done things way beyond that. So congratulations, and congratulations on knowing what you want to be already. You're one step ahead of the game. And to you, advisors, I know that you've spent countless hours that you don't get paid very much for in the summer when you're supposed to be off, and we appreciate that, and I know these students appreciate you giving them that opportunity. Now, we are going to take about a two-minute recess.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm about to let everybody go.
But we have something very important that we would like to do before everyone leaves. March 17th through the 21st has been proclaimed as School Board Appreciation Week. Forsyth County Board of Education is served by five board members who have, who all total have probably got nearly 50 years of experience serving school boards. But a lot of the times, our community only sees what our school board members do just in a meeting such as this. And I think it's important that as we recognize them and honor them this week, I'm glad we have such a crowd here to do this, that we recognize that, first of all, school board governance is critical for not only a school system, but for a community. And our school board has modeled stability as they have governed and been the key members of the governance team for our community, as they do two things that I think are particularly critical, at least under two different categories, and that is advocating for teachers and advocating for students. And if I say a couple of things that really do characterize the service of our school board is that they clearly and consistently advocate for teachers and they advocate for students in their work. So we pause to honor our school board members today, and I ask you to join me in congratulating our school board members. They've been given something instead of a certificate this year that maybe they can carry with them in a little different way.
It says, "Mounds of thanks for all you do," and it's a mound.
So join me in congratulating our two board members today.
And also Jim and Nick's gift card, which I love.
Thank you so much.
Now you can let it go.
Thank you very much. Now, we will take about a two-minute recess, and you are welcome to stay for the business portion of our meeting if you're interested, but if not, now would be the time that you can slip out.
If I can have everybody's attention, we'll call the meeting back to order, and we have a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Tom. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, public participation, we have none tonight. Presentation and discussion items first is our finance report with Mr. Dan Jones.
Let me do one thing first. This is the budget calendar for FY '15. We've already gone through probably about half of it, but we did get some information today on due term adjustment. I'll talk about that when I do the '14 budget. But it just gives you an idea of what we're shooting for. I did correspond with the county tax assessor today, and supposedly they'll run us some reports and maybe have us something next week. First look at the digest. That's normally what we have to deal with this time of the year. But this gives you an idea of what our, sort of the dates that we're going to look at. We hopefully present a tentative budget on the 15th board meeting, and we will shoot for final budget approval at the regular meeting on June the 19th. So take a look at that, and if we need to make any changes, just let me know. We'd be glad to do that.
How'd the year play out with the AdVolum change that was made this year? Did that come out as expected?
Actually, it has come out pretty close to what we expected. I'll show you in a minute. We collected about 97% of the budget. So that's pretty good this time of year.
But on the vehicle, AdVolum taxes, I know when I was at the state meeting, there were some counties that are really hurting because they're
were some counties that are really hurting because their money is not coming in. Like Houston County had a, took a million-dollar hit or more because of that.
And is the state going to make that whole? I mean, that was kind of the promise, I thought, with the change.
Yeah, they're supposedly making up the difference for this year at least.
Well, that was our fear all along, that on down the road, that this is not going to be the steady income that we'd hoped. Let's see.
I just hope they buy a lot of cars here in the county. But that, take a look at that, and then let me know if we need to make any changes. Okay, we've got for you tonight, the financial report for the month ending in February 2014. We started the month off with eighty-five million, eight-hundred-and-twelve thousand. Our revenue for the month was fifteen-point-four million. Expenses were thirteen million for payables and ten-point-eight for payroll, leaving us seventy-seven million, three-forty-six at the end of the month. Our budget, revenues were at seventy-eight percent, almost seventy-nine percent, and expenses were about sixty-six and a half percent, which is right in line if we divided it evenly every month. And here's ad valorem taxes, so we've collected almost ninety-seven percent. And that's, that's a great collection at this time of the year. Real estate transfer tax, this is probably what everybody expected, we're already more than what we budgeted there. Intangible, we're about halfway, so hopefully that'll pick up. And interest, we were counting on maybe the interest rates clicking up a little bit, but they really haven't, so we're not quite half of what we budgeted there. The expense categories, go back up here, you can see that everybody's right in line with where we should be, so I think we're in line for coming in at budget, or maybe even a little bit below. And again, the list of all the checks that were written for the month, you can scroll through that. The schools, we had a report from all the schools this month, and the total at the schools and all their bank accounts is six-point-seventy-eight dollars. Sales tax, this is the bad news. We collected two million, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. This is for January. We expected that to go down, because December, of course, is our biggest month, but it's twenty-one percent below last month, and we're just about half a percent above what we did the same time last year.
Did we have the bad weather in January also, or was it February?
Yes.
We lost a little bit, day or two.
Right. So, hopefully that had a little effect on it. This money is invested, we earned twelve-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, and right now, there's a balance of seventeen thousand, two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand in the investment. And when you put it on a graph, it kind of looks bad.
You like that spike?
But again, we had that same spike, if you look back in December, January of last year. There's money from the '07 bond that's set aside for brandy wine. We earned six-hundred-and-sixteen dollars in interest, and there's seven million, two-ninety-seven in that account. The '05 bond, again, this is reserved for brandy wine. We earned two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in interest, and there's two-point-nine million there. Capital projects, as I said, our money that we've got in these two accounts is set aside for brandy wine. And in debt service, there's a total between the sales tax and the debt service account of twenty-eight million, one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. And that's the financial report. If I can answer any questions, please let me know. And as I said, we got the, just today, this afternoon, the state posted the FY14 midterm. Give you a little information on that. We budgeted five million dollars in midterm adjustment, and we actually received six million, four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. And our austerity reduction remained the same at twenty-two million, six-fifty-two, six-sixty-three. And so, the total austerity, since they started this, that we've incurred is a hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars.
Do we know, Dan, yet, in relation to the total austerity cut, how much of that will affect our, our school system? Was that what, the number that you gave me was what we're gonna?
Yes.
The money that they're going to put back in?
Now, that, now, that's for FY15. We got some for fourteen. What's on the allotment sheet is the same as it was on the original allotment sheet.
Okay.
So, I haven't seen the effect of that. And, you know, that six-and-a-half million dollars that we got would include any adjustments that were made.
Okay.
So, we are.
But what they're voting on will be for the next year's budget?
Yes, ma'am. So, we are a little bit ahead of what we budgeted, and that's, that's the good news. Oh, and let me, one more thing. Our FTE count on the allotment sheets increased one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-three from the original allotment sheet. So, we do continue to see the growth, and I expect we'll see that next year also. Any questions, I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we'll have a legislative update with Dr. Evans.
In that, the legislature is completing day forty even as we speak, and if you would like some late-night entertainment, you can go online and watch the end of the legislative session. Most of the activity today has, and I'm not going to go into great detail about specific bills, we did that the last time, the budget really has not changed substantially. One thing, reference to what Ms. Crowe just commented about, was the all reduction and austerity reductions, that's about three-hundred-and-fourteen million dollars put back in the QBE budget. I think Mr. Jones and Mr. Gunn have talked about what's, what that may mean for us next year, and conservatively, in that six-to-seven million dollar range, to step back in there so that, that we will be able to do some things that we haven't been able to do. But that still leaves roughly, probably round figures, about another fifteen million dollars of continued austerity reductions against the QBE funding formula. The most, I think, interesting thing that has happened, based on my checking on and off with the legislative session today, is that many of us watched Senate Bill 167, I believe it was, which was a common core bill, which actually passed in the Senate, never passed, the committee in the House, as you know, but the House did pass a House Resolution 550 within the last couple of hours, which in essence would just send the, the whole issue of common course to study committee. So, what that usually means is that that's a, well, that means we've kicked the can down the road a little while, we'll let the smoke, the smoke clear, and we'll actually look and see what needs to be done, once we get some of the other issues out of the issue. But that has passed the House, and so we anticipate that perhaps passing in the Senate before twelve o'clock tonight. Otherwise, not a lot of excitement, as far as things that are clearly passed on both sides of the House and Senate, but we'll, we'll give an update on that later on as that takes place.
It's been a real blessing, that so little has passed, honestly.
Yep. Good budget news, not a lot has passed otherwise, so it's very positive.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the superintendent search application and brochure with Jennifer.
You want to do the board development?
You skipped.
See?
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind, Jennifer. The board professional development, that is, we talked about going to the regional, I have it right here on my iPad, we, I pulled it up, and it is June the fifteenth through the seventeenth in Savannah. The Georgia meeting is the fourteenth, thirteenth and fourteenth, and this is the fifteenth through the seventeenth. It's the NSBA Southern Region Conference. So, what, what do y'all feel about it? Do we want to try to do that for our training?
They've got some good speakers coming for it, and it's one half destiny the other. Stewley is going to be the one, the regular meeting, and another good speaker, so they've, they've lined up some really good speakers for both events. There will be more people from out of state, I don't, I don't know how many in that number, because I've never been to the regional meeting at all, so it's just whatever you all want to do.
I just kind of felt like, you know, Saks, one of the things they said is we need to get out there and compare with more than just what's in the state, and I thought this might be a first step to, to go to a regional.
I've heard good things about the regionals, we've just never been.
This will actually be the last Southern Regional event for NSBA.
Oh, really?
Uh-huh. They're not going to do anymore.
What are they doing? Are they changing to national?
I think they're going to do combined something, leadership and all different phases of it together, in a maybe a different way than what they're doing because of these regional events.
Okay.
We also talked about touring successful schools, actually going on sites compared to the speaking, which would be a better use of our time. And money.
Yeah.
And the conferences are good, but they're several days, and I don't know. Do we have, is there an actual agenda yet, other than some speakers?
Yeah, there is. It's, it was.
Last I looked, I mean, a month ago, it wasn't on, but it's.
Yeah, it's online now.
Yeah, it is definitely online. They had a webinar yesterday on it, but it's, I didn't bring it with me, but I'll email it to you, but it is online, what they're going to be having.
Are we still waiting to find out if we had any flexibility on the training?
We voted on that Saturday morning, and our district was not the only one that had questioned that, and all we'll have to do is documentation for what we do. I'm not quite sure what that's going to entail, but that we will be able to use other things.
Like our diversity training.
Our diversity training, that would be perfect.
Something like that. Now, Rottdale County is going through a whole series where they're meeting on Saturday morning for like four hours on some kind of stuff that they want to be able to get credit for.
Right.
So, we, we can look at that as we plan the year as well. We can use the diversity training. Are we having another session besides?
In the next year, what will be planned will be another slant. We've been covering, covering a lot of Asian studies for this year, we'll be looking at another one for next year.
Okay. Things like that. I, I wondered also on the book studies, if that would be counted, I don't know. So, I think they have to define what's going to be acceptable, but it is not, the clarification was that the extra three hours that are for the next level do not have to be state-approved.
That's good news. So, our diversity training could count for the extra three hours to be the.
The regular, normal ones.
And the leadership retreat, maybe?
Well, that's what I think should count. I do too.
Yes, I would think so.
I do too. That, I think, needs to be clarified with them, but the, the original nine hours has to be state-approved stuff. That, they won't change on that part of it.
Okay. Well, can we look, can we take a moment? Do you have it up on your screen?
Yeah, I'm looking at it, and I really don't see much, except for the breakout sessions. We've already heard Bill Curry at the GSBA back in December. Michael Thurman, no comment.
He's a great speaker.
Yeah.
He is.
But I just want, I question that, for the amount of time we spend, and the amount of money we spend there, I just, could we take that same amount and condense it into more hardcore training that we actually?
Well, I know I found our own leadership retreat, which I assume, Valerie, do you know, it's still the first on like June second and third?
It's actually the second week.
It's actually the second week, the ninth and tenth this year? Okay. I just found, we get so much out of that because it's in Forsyth County, and, you know, we learn so much, it's just so valuable.
Well, even just like the diversity training, I've talked to a couple of principals who have already, just in those few weeks, have already applied that knowledge, and we're so excited to see an instant impact, and so, just stuff that actually works for us and is relative to what we do.
Well, I, I mean, my personal opinion is the breakout sessions and just the networking and, and talking, not even during the session, and the speakers, I mean, that's okay, but that's not where I get, what I get from all these conferences anyway. It's the meeting the other people and, and talking about what their district does, and I mean, I think that's where the value for me is.
Totally, darling. When we used to go to the national meetings, we really didn't get as much out of the meeting, but it was talking to other school districts across the country and learning what they do. That is the value of those conferences, not necessarily the speakers.
Right. And I, you know, I would, I would like to go to a school, to, to some schools, but I mean, I think we've tried to talk to a couple, and it hadn't worked out yet, and it's probably too late now to do anything in the fall or something.
Sounds like we're doing all the tours here, everybody's coming here. Well, it's just that when we've gone to GSBA many times, the staff here have been the presenters there, so.
I'd like to see us try to go to that one in June, if it works out.
I, I would kind of like to go too. I would just like to talk to people in the southeast, I think it would be a good opportunity, and especially if it's not going to happen again. So, I guess we can just, who can go?
Yeah.
We need to just get with Valerie, and, and she can, you can check on getting us registered in the rooms and things, so, is that what we're going to do?
That would be fine, I think.
Yeah, they look like lunch and dinner are on your own, and so we have to make an extra effort to try to hook up with other people during those periods, you know, while we're in sessions, try to say, what are y'all doing? Try to maybe even pre, pre-make some sessions, if we know certain districts are coming, try to connect with them and say, hey, let's do dinner tonight, so we can connect them out. That might be something we can do proactive and find out who's coming. So, if those districts we want to.
Right, that we're interested in.
Must go ahead and hook up with them.
See if some of those districts are coming, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that would be valuable.
And that would kind of kill two birds with one stone, if we intentionally did that.
And then maybe make a real visit to there afterwards.
Afterwards.
Well, we could pick and choose them from the ones we talked to.
That's a good idea, maybe we could set up, that would get us in to make a real visit.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
All righty, we got a plan. Okay, next, we have on the agenda, action items, and first, under action items, is the code of conduct with Todd Shirley. Oh, I can't, I'm sorry.
She just keeps skipping, skipping things.
I just keep skipping everybody.
It's because I'm hiding in the back.
It is, I looked out there, and you were gone, but I heard you.
No, I checked her off when I called her out the first time. Okay. What I've worked on, since you had your meeting with Dr. Puckett last week, was I took what we did last time, and then your feedback on the characteristics and qualities, and not hearing that restriction to do our brochure really allowed us to some flexibility, so this is what we have posted online right now, for you to review tonight and give me feedback. And I took your recommendations for the testimonials and put them there, and then there's also a link to the Positively Forsyth videos that we did, and so that showcases our employees and why they love to work for Seife County Schools. And then we took the beliefs and did the breakouts for all of that detail that we had that kind of expand on them a little bit more, and did pop-ups, so you have those there. And then I did a link to all of your pages, so they can get to know the board members a little bit.
I gotta update mine.
To, pardon?
I gotta update mine, mine's old.
Okay, if you want to send that to me, I can update that.
I'm not.
It is.
I'm sorry.
And then your characteristic and qualities are here in a separate attachment, too. And then, based on your conversation that you had last week with Dr. Puckett, and I also emailed him this week, too, that if you're ready to move with that and make some recommendations for changes, we can do that between today and Monday, and GSBA can actually post that on Monday. And then, given the four-to-six-week window that you discussed, with spring break falling in the middle of it, we thought that you would probably lean towards May second, but of course, that's always open to change. So, anything you want me to open or discuss?
She's trying to get back there.
It's, we're getting logged off quicker than normal tonight.
Yeah, we're getting logged off out of, out of email.
Out of B-Board? Do you want to go to the website and you can look at it?
Why don't you go ahead and go?
Okay, because this is actually on the website. If you go to the website and do forward slash application.
Why don't you hit the testimonials?
Pardon?
Click on the testimonials.
That's what I was trying to get to, and then.
The first is Baschista, and you've met him before at South Forsyth High School, he's a senior. And then, our Teacher of the Year from last year, Nick Crowder. Paige Andrews, who's a principal. And then Jenny was our Volunteer of the Year from Mashburn Elementary School. And then the hyperlink up at the top to the Positively Forsyth videos, and I believe there's four or five videos there.
Okay.
Great.
And then these were the characteristics and qualities that we emailed back and forth
The only thing I thought, and I was trying to get there to look at it, but it's not updated yet, the, when they click on the board page, does it take them to where they can see the meeting videos?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It goes to your, where they can click right here, and they can go to each one of your pages, or over on the left-hand side, they'll be able to see various items.
Okay, navigation to it. Okay, perfect.
This is a lot better, I think, than the paper brochure, Jennifer.
Oh, yes, so much better.
More interactive.
Is the testimonial, just a click here for the testimonials, is it, can we make it also more obvious, either on the left side, or, I mean, I just was struggling to find it?
Yeah.
It just, it seems like it's a good thing, to make it more prominent.
We can pull that out a little bit differently.
Maybe put it.
And then another item, too, that's an Eboard, was the text for the ad, and I don't have that online. And you had discussed last week doing Ed Week and LinkedIn, and so that would be for 30 days each, and it's just similar to the information on this webpage, but of course shorter.
Okay.
Okay, are you still good with that, do those two publications? Okay. Then I will make that modification about the testimonials, and then email everything to Dr. Puckett.
What other publication did we talk about?
We talked about AASA. Last time, you did Ed Week and AASA online, and then this time, we added in the LinkedIn instead of the AASA.
And so that's good with everybody?
I think so.
And is the May 2nd deadline, so we're all on the same page and everything's, okay, so we're ready to move forward with Dr. Puckett, then?
Sounds good.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me look and make sure I'm not skipping anybody. Next, I think, is the Code of Conduct with Todd Shirley.
Strike through that. Okay, as we do every year, we start the revisions in the Code of Conduct in approximately December, we ask the local schools to meet with their LSCs to get recommendations, and then they bring the recommendations to us via a representative from each school midway through December, and then we start putting this stuff together, and then we wait on legislative updates and everything to occur, as long as we can wait before we actually have to print the Code of Conduct. I want to say thank you to Lakisha and Jennifer, they do a wonderful job printing the Code of Conduct for us, and updating everything all the way to the last minute. I'm going to try to just kind of quickly go through the revisions. Probably the biggest revision that we're looking at is number one, and I'm operating here off of a couple of different, a couple of different things, so I'm going to do the best that I can. We have a strike-through version, and this was not in PDF form originally, so we're mismatching some of the pages here, but I'm just going to slide down and do the best I can. On page seven of the strike-through form that you have, there is a progressive discipline procedure, and what we have found, and I'm, I'm looking at it right here on the screen that I'm on right now, what we have found is that in years past, and especially this year, under each of the violations of the Code of Conduct, each violation has a progressive discipline listed with it. That has a tendency to cause, not only the local school administrators, but our office, a lot of problems, because when a parent reads that, they just assume that it automatically has to start with the first, with the first thing. So if you get a kid that violates any type of code of conduct, no matter how severe it is, it might say counseling, or meeting with counselor, or meeting with the parent first. The local schools have asked that we remove that, let that be in there one time, to say that these are the things that we can do with our discipline, but then let the actual violations stand alone. So what we're going to do throughout the entire Code of Conduct is do a strike-through on every one of those in the violations, let the violations stand by themselves, and then the school can refer back to the criteria that they have to issue discipline based on that. A lot of things will depend on a case-by-case basis. You just, we don't want to be so strict that we don't, we take away the opportunity for an administrator to look at discipline and prior history and things like that. On page 11, it is actually page 11 of the strike-through, the administrations asked that we bold the electronic cigarettes. Apparently, we're having a lot of problems with electronic cigarettes in the schools, and they wanted that highlighted, because some of the parents have not seen that. We're also seeing an influx of liquid marijuana, we know that that's headed this way, and that'll make its way to the, to the electronic cigarettes as well.
I have a question about, you've got that whole list now, now, if you start with number one here, number two, it's not crossed out, I don't know if you just haven't gotten to it, but then like, it'll say second or subsequent offense, mandatory referral to tribunal, so are you leaving some of the consequences in there, if it's mandatory?
Some of it may have to be left, if it's a mandatory, if it's a mandatory thing. Some of it, we were just unable to strike through because of the program we're working off of.
Oh, okay.
What you see in front of you is actually Jennifer's program.
Just a work in progress here.
And we're trying, it's a work in progress.
One other quick thing, I'm sure, in case you don't catch it, Kristin is now Vice Chair, and not myself, on one of the first pages.
Okay.
Just make a note of that.
I'll make a note of that.
Because that changed, that changed.
Okay, we'll do that. Page, again, page 11 of the strike-through version, under disrespectful conduct violation number six, the administration has asked that the word fight be changed to, an actual fight and subsequent fights may lead to tribunal, because subsequent fights, you know, if they fought two or three times in a school, typically, the patterns that we find is that they are going to tribunal them on a second fight. Many times, they've put them on a behavior contract after the first fight, stating that any subsequent fights would result in a tribunal. On page 13, willful disobedience for refusal to allow an administrator to search property when reasonable suspicion is involved, they wanted that added, because there are some students that, when we are operating under reasonable suspicion, especially in drug scenarios, we do have the right to search backpacks, we have the right to search phones, if that is, if that is part of it, and we want it to, or they wanted to add willful disobedience to that as well, if they refuse that. Approximately page 22 on the strike-through, and when I say page 22, it's the actual page itself listed. We're making a couple of changes there, but we're still waiting on some of the legislation to come out. We wanted to add, to update the no facsimile weapons statement, so we're going to make some revisions on the no facsimile, and we also wanted to add no handcuffs, because, believe it or not, we're starting to see kids wearing handcuffs as bracelets, and wearing them around their belts and stuff, and the handcuffs, there's really no purpose for them in a school, with the exception of the SROs. They can be placed on the hand and swung as a set of brass knuckles as well. Number, number eight and number nine were just two additions that our schools have asked for. A lot of times, when the administration, they're questioning kids, the parents get very angry, and say that they have a right to be there during questioning. Well, they don't have a right to be there during questioning. Administrations have a right to question children during, during an investigation without adults being there, and sometimes the parents don't know that, and we wanted to add that to the Code of Conduct.
Is that at any age?
Yes.
Is that at any age?
Yes, it is. And then, they wanted to add a reference, a reference of cellphone searches, again, just to reiterate that the search of a cellphone is legal if it is something that you're looking for under reasonable suspicion. For example, you get a tip that a kid is making a drug deal on a cellphone, you do have the right to go look at that and to determine that. You can't just randomly pull a kid's cellphone and start looking through it and find something and charge the kid with it, that's not what we're after.
Can I ask a question, if the right to question a child without the parent, even if they're 18 or older?
Well, if they're 18 or older, they, they are an adult, so, yes. If typically, if they're 18 or older, and they're being questioned for something severe, then it typically involves an SRO, too.
That's what I'm saying, if SRO is there, but then, could anything they say be held against them?
Could be. If the SRO is making an arrest, it could, it just depends on what the charges are.
So then, do they not have to answer?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, in regular court, they could say, I'm not answering, because it might be held against me in court, so a 10-year-old, I mean, I'm just asking.
They always have a right.
Is that what you were getting at?
Yeah, I just, if the child, I mean.
They always have a right to say, I'm not going to speak, and I mean, they're, they don't, they may not speak, it may not stop the school charges, and then the SRO would have to make a decision through his or her sergeant, as to how they proceed with actual criminal charges. Typically, the SROs are only involved if there is clear-cut drugs, alcohol, or some type of weapons violation in there, or a willful disobedience to follow school administration. Sometimes they have to get involved to escort a student to, to the, either off the grounds or to the car, or something like that, to the office.
Okay.
And that's just kind, that's where we are on the revisions this year. So again, the biggest one is just really removing most of the, the things that just continue to be reiterated under every code.
Any other questions? The only thing I'd like to say is, I think sometimes we get in a rut, and if you can just reiterate with people, when you're talking about this, the administrators, I feel like that it should be a case-by-case basis, and I know sometimes things happen, and they're like, well, that's what we always do, but if the kid's never been in trouble, I mean, I just, I just hope that you do tell them that it is a case-by-case basis, and, and just because this kid that's done it six times got tribunal, this kid that did something one time and just was stupid, you know, it should be case-by-case.
It is. What we look at, and what, what our office looks at, we always pop the discipline up, the past discipline, really kind of taking everything into consideration, but we ask the administration to take that into consideration, too. There are some things that it becomes a little difficult when you're, when you're dealing with, again, our drugs, our alcohol, distribution, those types of things, and weapons certainly is a little bit, I wouldn't, I won't say clear-cut, it's not always clear-cut, but chronic violations and things like that, we definitely ask them to take everything case-by-case. That's one of the reasons why we love, we love our Code of Conduct and the counting, because it does allow us the flexibility to go case-by-case. It doesn't just say, if you do this, you're going to get that, which is not a good way to do it.
I like that. Everybody does have a case-by-case. What happened with the bill, about the weapons bill?
I have the, this morning's, I have this morning's printout on that, again, it still continues to get changed, there are parts of it unlawful for any person to possess such a weapon on school grounds or in a school safety zone, violators will be guilty of a felony punishable up to $10,000, but license holders will be a misdemeanor and $100 fine. Local boards may authorize in writing personnel to have in their possession weapons while on school safe zones, and it goes through some criteria on that. Prohibitions against weapons in school zones do not apply to licensed individuals who are picking up a student, has a weapon in a parked vehicle, is 21 or older and has a weapon in a locked compartment of the motor vehicle, students are exempt from that prohibition, or teachers or other personnel authorized to possess or carry weapons by the local board. And so they go through some criteria, but it continues to kind of go back and forth.
But it.
We just watch it day by day.
It hadn't passed or anything, nothing's been.
We're just looking.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
We have to approve it.
It is recommended that the Forsyth County Board of Education approve the student codes of conduct for grades K through 5 and grades 6 through 12 for the 2014-15 school year.
Do I have a motion to approve?
It's unmoved.
Second?
A motion by Tom, and a second by Ann, all in favor? Unanimous? Didn't vote for. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all opposed? Okay, four. Kristin opposed. Okay, next, we have the 2014 Superintendent Search Contract. I think I emailed, we talked about this a little bit, I don't know if I can get back to it. If we can all pull it up. Nope, I can't get to it.
Here we go, which one you want?
Just the, uh, the search process. Okay, the search process, if you go down, is what Dr. Puckett went over with us last week. Does anybody have any questions about that, or do we all feel good about that? So on the same page with that, okay, the next document are the fees that they charge, and I think he said, you know, it's not a moneymaker for them, it's basically just, according to some other things we looked at, it's very, it's a reasonable.
Very reasonable.
Right, to what it could be. So I just wanted to let everybody look at that and make sure that we were all in agreement, that this is how we want to proceed with our search. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
Make a motion that we approve, contract.
Okay, I have a motion by Ann to approve.
Second?
A second by Nancy, all in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
We've gone through it last week pretty good.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? All right. And next, we have Points of Information with Dr. Evans.
I would just point out two items that you have, as far as points of information, Forsyth County Schools is going to be recognized as a tobacco-free schools confirmation for the state of Georgia, that is something that our policies have been worked on to develop so that Forsyth County Schools would receive that designation. Also, item number H, you have information about Facilities Plan Update, and there is a link provided online to, to give you access to those updated documents, but let you know that that Facilities Plan Process continues to be in place.
The one thing, when I was reading it, that I wanted to clarify, because I had to go back and read it, and this may be just me and my tired brain, but where it lists the gym at North, when it said that it was not covered by the Facilities Plan at the state, that, but it will be built, but it's not part of that plan.
Yeah, basically, the state does not, Bill, Tim, if you want to help me with this, please do, but the state does not fund the construction of gyms, gymnasiums, just basically instructional units, so consequently, when you do a facility like that, you pick up that with your local cost, as is being done within our bond referendum.
That's why when we build a new school, we pay half and they pay half, basically, right?
That's right.
By the time you add all the extracurricular.
Just want to make sure that people understood that it was going to be built, not what was part of that.
Yeah.
Because that's a little.
Maybe it gets confusing sometimes, but that's the reason why it's put that way.
Okay, anything else, anybody about the Points of Information? Okay, next, we have Executive Session for Personnel Issues. Do I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
It's unmoved, second?
A motion by Nancy, and a second by Ann, all in favor? Unanimous?